Did he say?
Good evening. I now call the Wednesday, October 6, 2021 meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowles, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Lefonja?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore? Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuel?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Here. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Mr. Kilgore. He is out of town and he is trying to join us remotely, so he may be joining us later. I move to item 1.02, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Dr. Mason and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Lefonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Samuel?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we're going to move to the invocation. I'll turn it over to our student rep.
Good evening, everyone. In my academy, we are passionate about learning. Each academy is a family that helps all students own their education. This journey builds a tradition of trust and accountability. Fun, engaging, real-world experiences in and out of the classroom build our confidence and prepare us for the future.
Are you going to introduce the students?
I don't have a list of the students.
Okay, you're doing the invocation.
It's Cherry. She was a little late getting here and I didn't get a chance to brief her on that, so if you'd go ahead and introduce her.
Okay, absolutely, not a problem. Okay, our invocation tonight will be done by Robin Sorrell, who is an eighth grader at THE Jones Magnet Middle School. Please come up and join us.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. See It Through by Edgar Guest. When you're up against a trouble, meet it squarely, face to face. Lift your chin and set your shoulders. Plant your feet and take a brace. When it's vain to try to dodge it, do the best that you can do. You may fail, but you may conquer. See it through. Black may be the clouds about you, and your future may seem grim. But don't let your nerve desert you. Keep yourself in fighting trim. If the worst is bound to happen, spite of all that you can do. Running from it will not save you. See it through. Even hope may seem but futile when with troubles you're beset. But remember, you are facing just what other men have met. You may fail, but fall still fighting. Don't give up, whatever you do. Eyes front, head high to the finish. See it through.
Great job. Thank you so much. Now, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, okay?
Yes.
How's school going so far?
It's good.
Really?
Yes.
I'm glad to hear it. We're all glad to hear that, right, Dr. Smith?
Absolutely.
Do you have some favorite subjects?
Uh, yes. I really like science.
Oh, wonderful. So, do you have anyone here with you today that is being supportive of you, giving the invocation?
Yes, my parents.
Would you like to introduce them, please?
Yes.
My mother.
Please stand.
And my father.
All right. That's great. To the parents, thank you so much for sharing Robin with us tonight. That was very inspirational. And as you started, the Vice Chair, Dr. Mason, was quoting right along with you. So it must be near and dear to his heart as well. But thank you so much and have a great academic year.
Thank you.
Now, Robin, do you have another supporter who's here maybe from your school? Oh, she's hugging her. If the camera can pick it up, that's the principal, Ms. Sharon Slater. Thank you all again. Now, as we get ready for recognition, let me just make a couple of statements very quickly. One is that, keep in mind, this is a school, therefore masks are required. If we see that you're not wearing a mask, I will contact security who's standing there, and you will have to be escorted out because we have to keep everyone's safety in mind. And as I'm looking right now, I don't see anyone without a mask. Okay, let's keep moving. Now, before we get to our official recognitions, there's a very special recognition we're doing tonight, and I'd like to call on Ms. Darlene Walker. Ms. Walker, if you'll come up and just stand right here, there's a little spot, this X, for you to use this boom mic. Okay? Ms. Walker is President of the Hampton Roads Chapter of the National Black Child Development Institute, and we're happy to have her. You can come up so you can hear the mic.
Okay. Step up.
Oh, right there. She wants you on the X.
On the X? Okay, yeah.
Let's keep everybody safe in another way.
That's all good, too. Alrighty. Well, thank you guys for having us here today. I am Darlene Walker, and I'm with the National Black Child Development Institute, and it is our BCDI Hampton Roads affiliate. We are here based in the Hampton Roads area located in Hampton, but we cover the whole of Hampton Roads. And so, we are super excited to be able to present this award to Tarant Middle School. So, Mr. Lucas and Ms. Cartwright, would you come forward?
Dr. Dwayne Lucas and Ms. Cartwright.
Now, with the middle school, we are normally through Black Child working with preschoolers and elementary level. And so, Tarant is our first middle school to actually work with. And so, with meeting Ms. Cartwright, she's been a jewel and just growing that relationship. And so, I had the opportunity to write a grant earlier in the year, and we received the grant. And so, tonight, we're giving Tarant a $1,000 grant. And... This is a non-restrictive grant, so they get to do what they need to do with this, but it must support students. And so, there's a little paper in there for you guys and all. No going to Miami. But we definitely know that in these times, so many things are going on. We were looking to give you guys backpacks and supplies, the normal thing. But we know we didn't have the capacity to come together. We're trying to be restricted in the social distancing and so forth. And so, the national office gave us approval to give you guys the money and let you go do what you need to do to support our children because we know that they need more than just some pencils and a notebook and a backpack. So, here you go. And everything is inside. So, we thank you guys for having us. We have two of our members here, Dr. Cynthia Rome and Mr. Laura Fitzgerald. We also have our school board person, and he has a lot of titles for us. Jason Samuels, we love you, and we thank you. Dr. Mason, Dr. Smith, and thank you for bringing this all together for us. And we have some other information that we'll share with you guys a little bit later because they're also going to get books for all of their sixth grade level children. And so, we'll be working that out so they get the additional books. We're promoting literacy. So they'll get the books and we'll work that out and take some pictures and all that good stuff, too. So, thank you guys for this moment.
Thank you so much, Ms. Walker. Thank you so much. And you know, I'm sure Principal Dwayne, Dr. Lucas, will be excited to figure out what they're going to do with those funds. And a special shout-out to Ms. Cartwright, who she said had been working with her as the parent environment facilitator at the school. We really appreciate that. It's always really refreshing to hear people come before us who have something positive to bring. You know, it's easy to bring something negative. But for people who come before this school board and let us know through their own actions how much they love Hampton City Schools, that's what really counts. As a personal friend of mine said earlier, "If you can't help, why are you even here?" So, we want to thank you and your organization again. We appreciate it so much. Did you want to share something, Mr. Samuels?
No, I just want to say, express my sincere appreciation to Darling as the President of this chapter. She is an outstanding leader, and thank you so much for the opportunity. A few years ago, when you approached me and asked me to serve as a member of the board, so I want to say thank you so much. And we're doing great work, not just in the city of Hampton, Hampton City School, but as Ms. Darling Walker said, across the Hampton Roads area. And I look forward to our continued contribution and support of not only Hampton City Schools, but also schools within the Hampton Roads area. So once again, thank you so much, Ms. Walker. And Ms. Walker is also a fellow Norfolk State alumni.
I think I've seen her in green and gold quite a bit. Thank you again for everything. Now, for our official recognition, I'd like to call on our Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing, Ms. Kelly Gore. She will be assisted tonight by Ms. Tina Banks Gray.
Well, thank you so much, Chairwoman Cherry, Vice Chair Dr. Mason, members of the school board, Superintendent Smith, and members of the Hampton City Schools family. At this time, we have Ms. Banks Gray here at the microphone, and she's going to assist in our recognitions. And our first recognition this evening is one of our remarkable teachers. So again, great news here for Hampton City Schools. So I'd like to invite Mr. Eric Breedy to join me down beside the podium. And y'all don't even know why he's here, but let's give him a hand of applause. I promise you, it's good stuff. So, Mr. Breedy, for those of you who do not know him, and most of us absolutely know him because he is a wonderful teacher, he's one of our cybersecurity teachers for the Academy of Cybersecurity, Engineering, and Robotics at Phoebus High School. He is here with us tonight to be recognized as he was one of two Virginia high school cybersecurity teachers who has received the inaugural 2021 Virginia Cybersecurity Educator Award for the Commonwealth of Virginia. Now, to tell you a little bit about the Virginia Cybersecurity Educator Award, it is now going to be bestowed annually by organizers of the Virginia Cybersecurity Education Conference. It recognizes excellence in cybersecurity education. And this award acknowledges not only the incredibly hard work and achievements of the recipient, but also looks at the success of their students under their watch. And he's definitely had several hundred students, if not thousands, under your watch, correct? So, in announcing Mr. Breedy's receipt of the award, Dr. Peggy Brousse, who is the Director of the Cybersecurity Engineering UG Program at George Basin University, said that Mr. Breedy also helped raise cybersecurity career awareness by exposing his students professionals in the industry by the means of guest lecturers, partnerships with cybersecurity instructors from local higher ed institutes, and by offering field trips to the Virginia Peninsula Community College formerly known as Thomas Nelson Community College Annual Regional Cybersecurity Conference. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Banks Gray.
Now, thank you so much, Ms. Gore. Now, Mr. Breedy, as an actual current member of the Career and Technical Education Advisory Council, I am thrilled to recognize you this evening, sir. Just a little bit of background, I wanted to, before we actually give you your presentation, I want to read a few words from Dr. Peggy Brousse. She said, "Dr." or I'm sorry, "Mr. Breedy goes beyond teaching technical skills and works to make tech, uh, works to make connections to social and ethical aspects of cybersecurity, showing both sides of the coin, offense and defense, just like my Dallas Cowboys." Had to throw that in there. He used...
Security.
Sorry, off-script, I'm sorry. Sorry, off-script there. He uses the wealth of personal human resources and events in Hampton Roads to help the students that see themselves as professionals in the field of cybersecurity. Opportunity leads to interest, and interest leads to success. Mr. Breedy, on behalf of Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Dr. Mason, the Hampton City School Board, and our Superintendent Jeffrey Smith, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, is an honor to present you with this certificate. So let me give you your little nice certificate. Hold on one second. So lovely. So his certificate says, "Certificate of Achievement from Hampton City School Board." Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Eric Breedy, Phoebus High School Cybersecurity Educator Award. Congratulations, all.
Before you leave the stage, halt.
Stay right there. And then also, if we have any Phoebus Phantoms, any administrators or family that's here to support, Mr. Breedy, could you please stand up to be recognized this evening?
And Ms. Banks Gray, if you don't mind, I'm going to also ask to stand Ms. Veronica Hurd and Dr. Raymond Haynes and Seth Black for, because he is an Academies of Hampton teacher as well. And if you have not had the opportunity to visit him in his classroom, and I know because of COVID that things are slowly getting back to normal, but prior to COVID, visiting his classroom during our Academies of Hampton tours was truly a treat for visitors as well as us here in Hampton City Schools.
Absolutely amazing. Thank you, Mr. Breedy. We appreciate you. Thanks for all you do.
All right.
Thank you so much, Mr. Breedy. You make us all proud.
And before we move on to our next agenda item, I'm actually going to invite Dr. Raymond Haynes, our Chief of Secondary School Leadership, to the podium to share some very exciting news with the board in regard to our on-time graduation rate and our dropout rate.
Have to make all these adjustments when you get a certain age. Take the glasses off and everything. Good evening, Chairwoman Cherry, Vice Chair Mason, members of the board, Doc Smith, and the Hampton community. I am excited this evening to share some great news in regards to our on-time graduation rate and the work that went into it, and all the folks who are here who helped to execute the plan. So I kind of want to start off with a quote by Simon Sinek. He says, "Greatness starts with a clear vision of the future." Greatness starts with a clear vision of the future. We are very fortunate to have a visionary leader in Dr. Smith, leading Hampton City Schools. In 2015, Dr. Smith had a vision of greatness for Hampton City Schools. In the recently published article regarding Hampton City Schools making history with the highest on-time graduation rate and the lowest dropout rate to date, Doc Smith makes this statement, and I quote, "In 2015, we set a student achievement goal that by 2020, 95% of each graduating class will graduate on time with a diploma and credentials that verify they are prepared to succeed in the economy and the community." Today, we can proudly share that this is the second graduating class to actually exceed this goal. Again, greatness starts with a clear vision of the future, and we certainly thank Dr. Smith for his vision and leadership. Not only did Dr. Smith speak the vision, he worked with Hampton City Schools teams to solidify the Achievement and Progress Monitoring Plan for making the vision, the vision, a reality. As a result of his vision, plan, and systems approach, Dr. Donna Woods, who is recently retired, was charged to build from places of strength and the work, hard work and efforts of those dedicated to this work. We, and I know I, continue to benefit immensely from her leadership consultation and wisdom, and I am personally forever grateful for her unwavering support and mentorship. Today, Hampton City Schools is being celebrated for indeed making history. So I kind of want to just read a couple of points that highlight the hard work and efforts that we put forth in the division to ensure that our young people graduated on time, college career, and life-ready. So, it reads thusly, "Hampton City Schools Class of 2021, a total of 1,466 students, posted the highest division on-time graduation rate and the lowest dropout rate since 2008. The Virginia Department of Education initiated cohort-based calculations for graduation and dropout rates. On-time graduation rate, the Virginia Department of Education reported 96.9% of Hampton's 2021 graduates earned their diplomas in four years, surpassing the state's average of 93%. Hampton's on-time graduation rate is the second highest on-time graduation rate in the region. Also, Hampton has the second highest rate in the Commonwealth of Virginia when compared to schools that have between 500 and 5,000 students in the Class of 2021. With the divisions focused on equity, on-time graduation rates continue to climb for student groups who are, who are historically underrepresented. We also should note that, in addition, 16 of our 18 student performance groups have higher than a 95% rate, and all 18 of the performance groups outpaced the state's average." We also understand that when we're calculating overall rates, that they sort of take out the GED and other variables with that, but students who earn a high school equivalency certificate such as a GED or complete high school without earning a diploma are not included as graduates in calculating on-time graduation rates. But Hampton City Schools is proud of our students who graduated on time with a diploma as well as our students who earned a GED or a Certificate of Completion. So our completion rate for all students for the Class of 2021, including diplomas, GED, certificates of completion, is 97.6% compared to the state's average of 93.72%. What I think is critically important to note is the dropout rate. The dropout rate for the Class of 2021 in the Commonwealth of Virginia, the dropout rate for the Class of 2021 in the Commonwealth of Virginia is 4.3%. Hampton's 2021 dropout rate is 0.3% compared to what the division's dropout rate was in 2008 at 14.1. Hampton's 0.3% is the lowest dropout rate of the 15 school divisions that comprise Region 2, which includes all the school divisions in the Hampton Roads from the South Side Peninsula and Eastern Shore. The division has the lowest dropout weight, rate in the Commonwealth of Virginia, excluding five school divisions in the state with less than 230 students in the Class of 2021. He put the theme of the vision. Bill Hyboll said, "Vision is a picture of the future that produces passion." There are so many who are passionate about achieving the vision and who helped with the execution of the plan. Doc Smith often says, "The proof is not in the pudding, the proof is in the taste of the pudding." So when you're looking at having a plan, it's critically important that you have key folks in here to actually execute the plan. So, we certainly want to acknowledge all four high schools and the Alternative Learning Center. At Bethel High School, the home of academic excellence led by Mr. Ralph Saunders, his academy principals, and Ms. Kikita Davis was the graduation specialist at the time. We certainly want to acknowledge the team at Bethel High School to please stand. We know that Ms. Lynette Hextall, who is now the graduation specialist at Bethel High School, will continue to lead the charge and maintain that expectation of greatness. At THE Hampton High School, where the legacy of excellence continues, led by Ms. Mika Pollard, the academy principals, and Mr. Melvin Brown, the graduation specialist, certainly want to have them stand and be acknowledged at this time as well. Kickitaine High School, the home where everyday greatness is the expectation, led by Dr. Violet Whitman, academy principals, and Dr. Sarita Casey was the graduation specialist at that time, would you all please stand and be recognized? Again, we recognize that Ms. Kikita Davis, who was formerly at Bethel and now a Kickitaine Warrior, will continue to lead the charge and the expectation of greatness there as the graduation specialist. Last but certainly not least, with the purpose at Phoebus High School is greatness every day and every way, led by Mr. James Harris, the academy principals, and Dr. Nicole Boston Blanchard, graduation specialists. We certainly want them to stand and be recognized as well. We also know that there are other folks who are part of this process in making certain that these results were or came out the way that they did. I would be remiss if I didn't mention Ms. Linda Dietz, the Supervisor of Research Accountability and Data Management, Ms. Amber Brown, the Director of Secondary School Leadership, and of course, Ms. Veronica Hurd, who makes certain that all the work we do centers around the Hampton Portrait of a Graduate. So the three of them would stand to be recognized as well. Certainly want to acknowledge the students in the Class of 2021 for all the hard work they did in making certain that these results were the way they are. There are a lot of untold stories that go above and beyond what you see on paper. It's, it's, it goes without saying that folks in the schools actually go to places of employment where students are, having conversations with the management at the workplaces as well as students, making certain that they're on track and still have that sense of hope that they can do things. And we know, we've even seen where students have been relentless in actually sitting out in front of schools where they can actually get a Wi-Fi signal just to ensure that they were getting their work submitted on time. I certainly want to acknowledge Ms. Dana Kurtz at the Alternative Learning Center. I certainly want to acknowledge Ms. Dana Kurtz at the Alternative Learning Center as well for all the hard work they do to support the high schools and ensuring that we have our students graduate on time as well. Now, as the Chief of Secondary School Leadership, I consider it an honor and a privilege to work alongside such an esteemed group of individuals who exemplify what it truly means to say, or wouldn't we say, "Every child, every day, whatever it takes." I certainly want to say thank you to the Hampton City Schools School Board for embracing and supporting Dr. Smith's vision. I certainly would be remiss again if I didn't mention the Class of 2021 making its mark in history, included Mr. Samuel's daughter, my daughter, Ms. Heard's daughter, and other folks in here who may have children graduating in that class as well. Last, I want to end with Ron Kaufman. He said, "Vision with action makes a powerful reality." The reality for Hampton City Schools today is history-making, and we should all be proud. I thank you for this opportunity to share such great news.
And Madam Chair and members of the board, if I could just take the privilege to also acknowledge Dr. Haynes for his outstanding leadership as the Chief of Secondary Schools, would you kindly join him with the superintendent acknowledging his exceptional leadership? Thank you, Dr. Haynes, in this regard.
Well, as much as I don't want recognitions to end because that's the most fantastic news that I've heard all day, that is the conclusion of our recognitions.
Okay, thank you so much. Let me tell you, it was like sitting here watching the Academy Awards, except we were winning all the awards. We won in every category, did we not? I know this board has a lot to say, but I just want to start by saying, on behalf of the board, we can't thank you enough. We really cannot. You all have knocked it out of the park. And everything people are hearing about Hampton City Schools is true. We've got caring teachers, we've got caring administrators, and we've got a leader who has a vision and has put forth that vision that people not only bought into, but believed and fought for. So I just want to say, you all are amazing, and don't let anybody tell you anything other than that. Thank you again. Any board members have any comments? Okay.
May I have some?
Yes, Dr. Woodhouse.
Thank you so much, and I probably need to keep my mask on, right? Okay. But Dr. Haynes, Dr. Smith, and even Dr. Woods, who was a part of this, with all of the board's staff and Dr. Smith's staff and high school staff also. One of my greatest concerns when I ran for school board was the dropout rate along with the accreditation and the suspension rate. And I must say that this school system has come a long ways, and we are blessed to have someone of Dr. Smith's caliber and his initiative and to motivate the teachers, the principals, the board members, staff members rather, and even our students. We can say that we are one of the greatest school systems in Virginia. I'll say, in Virginia and abroad. So I want to say thank you so much for your hard work, for your dedication, and I'm praying that you will be blessed tremendously for all of your hard work and that you will look at yourselves and say, "Look what we have accomplished through the grace of God." God bless you.
Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse. Very well said. Any other board members?
Chairwoman Cherry.
Yes, Mr. Samuel.
I just, one thing. And in reference to the accomplishments, mind you, this was accomplished during a pandemic.
Absolutely.
And I can speak from a perspective as a parent, seeing my daughter, who is a member of the Class of 2021 for 16 months, not able to experience teaching and learning in the classroom setting and in person, and having to do this virtually with a monitor. And seeing the compassion that the teachers expressed through that monitor, ensuring that not only my child was engaged, but also other students within her classroom were engaged. And I also observed how supportive the children were of each other, where if a child was experiencing some deficit in an area, I personally saw where either my daughter would pick up the phone and call that other student, or if Alana was experiencing some deficit in math or so, Malcolm Richardson would call, and that is Dr. Richardson's son, would call Alana and say, "Let's work through this." And that is, as Dr. Smith alluded or shared when we first interviewed him in 2015, the systems approach. It requires us to be working from a place of strength to support each other. And that vision that Dr. Smith has, or shared with us in 2015, 2014 school year, about the systems approach and working from places of strength, has now flowed down even to the students, where they are supporting each other to make sure that they pull each other up instead of tearing each other apart. And I so appreciate the experience that not only my child had, but also the other students. For example, and I know the president of Thomas Nelson is here, and Dr. Towana, and also the experience that my child has through the virtual learning at Thomas Nelson, which basically strengthened her experience in the teaching and learning. So Dr. Smith, not just within the school community, but also extending your vision outwards to our local community college and so forth, to make sure that our students are not only life and career-ready when they leave our walls or leave our virtual screen. And I just want to express my sincere appreciation to everyone, and I'm not going to exclude my man, Dr. John Cagiano, the curriculum. He deserved accolades also because, as, he was an instrumental part of designing that curriculum. So Dr. Cagiano, Dr. C, much respect to you, man, for working along with Dr. Haynes and so forth to making this a reality. So thank you all so much, and I know I was long-winded, but I had to say, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Samuel. No, you know, when you're telling the truth, you can be long-winded. And that was awesome. And I'm so glad that you mentioned that it was during a pandemic because generally what people were offering up during a pandemic were excuses, and we didn't do that. And not only did we meet the charge, we exceeded the charge. So I think that is, again, just phenomenal. Any other board members have any other comments?
And just to say, certainly I know that the administrators and staff will also join the superintendent in acknowledging the strength of our board and to say that we greatly appreciate your leadership. You cannot accomplish this without the support and the excellent leadership of a school board. So Madam Chair, members of the board, we want to also thank you for the strong leadership of this particular board. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Now, we're going to move on to our consent agenda, but I know a lot of you just won't be sitting around watching us go through this. So I'm going to give you an opportunity to leave if you need to leave any of the people who've been recognized tonight. And again, thank you so much. Okay, moving on with our consent agenda, which consists of Item 3.01 Personnel Report Number 21-18, 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of September 1, 2021, and 3.03 Certification of the Closed Session of September 1, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Tina Banks Gray and seconded by Dr. Mason that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, moving on to Item 4, which consists of superintendent and staff reports, I'll now turn it over to our visionary leader, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board, and Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, thank you so very much. At this particular time, I'm going to invite and ask Dr. Haynes, Dr. Raymond Haynes, to come forward, our Chief of Secondary Schools, and I think he is going to be joined by Ms. Veronica Heard. And really, as you will recall as a board, and certainly our viewing audience, that April of 2017, we were designated as a forward next-generation learning community. And during this time, we really accepted the challenge and the commitment to transform what it means to teach and learn in Hampton, the student engagement, but also in terms of their experience, but also the business and civic engagement. And so we moved from four pocket academies to 16 wall-to-wall, 18 career pathways. Today, I think you're going to hear Ms. Heard talk about the fact that we have 43 populated career pathways for our young people. And so we have remained true to that transformation and again with Dr. Haynes and his leadership to really move forward with fidelity. And so, Dr. Haynes, at this particular time, please.
Good evening again, Chairwoman Cherry, Vice Chair Mason, members of the board, Dot Smith, and the Hampton community. We're pleased to come before you this evening to provide you with an Academies of Hampton update, My Future, My Journey. So this evening, we will take you through the presentation by discussing the continuing, the transformation, transforming teaching and learning, transforming the secondary school experience, transforming business and civic engagement, discussing next steps, and the ask of the community that we'll have towards the end. I certainly want to share that we are continuing the course and making certain that we stay the course in regards to this transformational process. Despite the pandemic, we've continued with the work and the promise and commitment that we have made to the community, and most importantly, to our young people. So I'm going to ask Ms. Tamea Kelly to join me in the brand promise once again, because this is the mantra upon which we stand with the Academies of Hampton. So if you'll join me at this time in reading that brand promise. "In my academy, we are passionate about learning. Each academy is a family that helps all students own their education. This journey builds a tradition of trust and accountability. Fun, engaging, real-world experiences in and out of the classroom build our confidence and prepare us for the future." Thank you, Tamea. That is something that we want to be embedded in our young people's minds and them being able to recite that brand and that promise and commitment that we have made to them. As you know, you all have seen this countless amount of times and looking at the multiple exit points upon which the My Future, My Journey Academies of Hampton is all about. So as you look at that, you can see that the multiple exit points speak to being prepared for college, career, and life altogether. At this point, I want to pause and acknowledge members of Hampton City Schools in the transformation process and the Academies of Hampton, team members, if you all would stand at this time. We certainly appreciate their relentless efforts and ongoing work, and they know that the work does not end at the end of the 4:30, 5 o'clock workday, and they know it's pretty much 24/7. So we certainly appreciate their dedication and commitment. So also, as you know, everything we do is centered around the Hampton Portrait of a Graduate. And as I said earlier, it is our promise to our young people. It's the promise and commitment we've made to the parents and promise and commitment we've made to the community as a whole. So we want to make certain that this is totally embedded in our graduates as they walk across the stage and want to be able to ask them, "Did we keep our promise to you? Did we graduate you based on the profile of a Hampton graduate?" And them actually being able to understand what that means. So it's one thing to have a nice graphic, but to be able to discuss in detail, "What does this really mean to you, and how did we make this happen for you? Is this a reality? Do you feel that you are prepared for college, career, and life leaving Hampton, Bethel, Kickitaine, or Phoebus?" At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Heard, our Academies of Hampton director.
Thank you for the opportunity, Chairperson Cherry, Vice Chairperson Dr. Mason, school board members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. I am elated to be here with you all today. I did hear you just say, Chairperson Cherry, that long-winded when we are celebrating good things, so I hope this is long-winded enough for you all to hear the great things that we're doing. But I did want to center the conversation, and it is basically how the poem ended before, "And eyes front, head high to the finish, see it through." And that's exactly what we are doing when we're transforming Hampton City Schools. The pandemic, the other things that are happening outside of our buildings, we know we will see this through because each and every one of our young people deserve for us to uphold not only our brand promise to them, but our commitment that they will leave Hampton City Schools, the Portrait of a Hampton Graduate. So everything that I will share with you today is how we are staying not only the course and afloat, but propelling forward with force to make this happen because time did not sit still during that pandemic. Young people still graduated, young people were still entering into our division, and we will uphold our commitment to each and every one of them. So as you can see here, part of our commitment towards the Portrait of a Hampton Graduate is a series of experience that allow our young people to have stackable skills that they will be able to take with them when they exit Hampton City Schools. So when you see here, ninth grade, our young people enter into one of the freshman academies, and it's all about that self-career and industry exploration. In the experiences they have in the school experiences, but they also have out-of-school time experiences to emphasize the things that they were learning or continue to learn during the school time. You can see that the continuing continues on. And our commitment to our young people was, even during the pandemic, that we would uphold our commitment to our young people. So the thing was, yes, it may look differently, and it challenged us to think outside of the box, but we made it happen. So above you will see that we offered virtual experiences for our young people. We had a virtual career expo, a virtual commitment to graduate event. We had virtual site visits. We had virtual guest speakers. We brought the virtual elements and utilized them through not only immediate technology advances, but we were able to introduce our young people to people that maybe they would not have met face-to-face because distance was between them. So we took advantage of the virtual spaces that allowed us to see things differently and to think outside the box. But in addition to that, as we started to open back up and we had a hybrid model, we had the opportunity this summer to have an in-person summer bridge, where our young people came and they built those relationships. They interacted with their teachers and peers, and they got to start dispelling some of the myths of the things that make them nervous when it's transitioning back to high school or transition into high school for the first time. In addition to that, and you may have seen in the news, we had the opportunity for the young people to experience the Summer Business Institute, where they were solving real-world problems that were faced or continue to be faced by our business community. In addition to that, with Mr. Samuel's support, we were able to pay young people for summer youth employment opportunities that were aligned with their academy of choice. So as we continue to look ahead, we're not stopping. We won't stop tomorrow. We're not stopping the next day or the day after that. We will continue to make sure this happens for our young people. This year, we are going to continue with the My Future, My Journey Career Exploratory Program, and we will ensure that the work-based learning continuum reaches the students as we are committed. as we are committed to make it happen. So we're continuing to move ahead. The floating classroom continued during the pandemic. Yes, it looked differently, but it created an opportunity for us to have classroom integration that was equity-driven approach, simply due to the fact that young people had the opportunity during the school time to learn that also spilled into the off-to-school hours to reemphasize that learning. As you can see here at Kiketan High School, through the Academy of the Architect, Environment, and Engineering, young people had the opportunity, which was ingrained into their curriculum, to learn through eye dissection, where Captain Irving was flying in a plane and dissecting an eyeball. I don't know, but that's what happened, right? But not only that, they had the opportunity to have eyeballs with them, as it sounds really technical, it's a better way of saying it. But basically, they had an eyeball, and they were able to model what Captain Irving was doing inside of the classroom. That doesn't happen every day, but it does in Hampton City Schools. In addition to that, we had the opportunity to partner with Freshman Academy at Phoebus High School, along with the University of Florida. And our young people had the opportunity to start learning how to invest their money now instead of later. So they learned about the difference between renting and leasing. They learned about the difference of the psychology of marketing and sales. They had the opportunity to learn more about acquiring a vessel. They started learning this in ninth grade, so then maybe they can start investing that summer internship money sooner rather than later. These are some of the things that were happening in Hampton City Schools during the pandemic or as we were transitioning back. Again, this just is an indicator of some of the experiences that continued to happen when Hampton City Schools came together, upheld our commitment to young people, but most importantly, we thought outside the box. The redesign frame consists of transforming teaching and learning, which ultimately means what and how our students learn in our buildings. It consists of transforming the secondary experience. What it feels to learn, what it feels like in our buildings. In addition to this, transforming business and civic engagement. I see you looking back there. What it looks like and feels like to engage with our buildings. Again, this is not a program, it is a transformation. We are redesigning what it means to teach and learn in our buildings, and this will not happen overnight, but it is happening by looking at the structures that we have in place and then evaluating them to meet our current and future needs. That's the type of things that we were doing during the pandemic. It did not slow us down, it helped us to propel forward in different ways. Transforming teaching and learning, looking at the professional development opportunities that we put in place for our teachers and others. So when you're looking at the transformation, again, the blueprint, there's various phases that need additional support or non-traditional support to help move the transformation forward. At the center, we continue to work with Forward Next Generation Learning, and we have transformation coaches that have been with us since the beginning. We also elicited the support for our MASTA schedule. We also elicited the support for our communication strategy and how we can amplify and elevate our student voice and experiences. In addition to that, we're looking at our community-connected work-based learning continuum and how we create and sustain powerful partnerships. And finally, we're looking at the roles and responsibilities of our buildings and how they may have to evolve to meet the needs of the small learning community model. In addition to that, we're working closely with the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Department to look how we integrate different types of learners into the curriculum, but then also putting supports in place to help our teachers and others to really peel back what does it mean by interdisciplinary teaching and learning? What do these experiences mean? And how can we ensure, through an equity-driven lens, that it reaches all our students? So again, this is just a snapshot to show you that we were continuing to propel forward, and we will continue to propel forward. It just breaks down, so for example, if you look at the first line here, it says Alignment National. That is the organization that we worked with, with the MASTA schedule, along with Dr. Henderson. This was a series, so we're not just doing one-and-done professional developments. We're ensuring that we have a series in place that helps us to stack the necessary skills and support along the journey as we continue with. So the MASTA schedule for, again, was for our Academy Principals of Instruction. We also had our counseling coordinators there, and our academy coaches, who were on this journey with us, and this is a two-year journey of a series of support as we're going through the process together. So modeling, applying, and then evaluating how we're doing things. And again, I know you have this for your records, so it walks you through the different ones and how they break down. Okay, so when we think of the portrait of a Hampton graduate, everything that we're doing in Hampton City Schools to build this opportunity for our young people is driven by these different facets. One of those facets being student voice and choice, community-connected partnerships. That is our foundation. So when you looked at the professional development opportunities that I just showed you, it's going to show you how those various entities build the foundation and the structure of our division. So student voice and choice, the foundation, along with community-connected partnerships. The MASTA schedule is the frame of how we do things. If we do not have a strong frame that allows for cohort scheduling and for our teachers to meet and our students to travel together, then we do not have a small learning community model. In addition to that, if we do not create the opportunity for our academy leadership to have a better understanding of their role and how they support this type of model, then the structure of the home will not uphold itself. In addition to that, if we don't look at how, through our team and model, we respond to the needs of our students in traditional and non-traditional ways, then the same problems will permeate our home, which we do not want in there. We also have, again, if we look at the windows into our home, the academy themed interdisciplinary teaching and learning. If the instruction does not reach the theme of the academy, then we're just teaching the way we've always been teaching. So we want to make sure the lessons are not only flavored through the lens of the academy, but that our teachers, English, math, whatever the subjects that are on the team, they have the opportunity to learn how to reinforce each other's teachings in various ways. That's how we are trying to work with our academy teams to respond to the needs of the students, and then this instruction, how and what is delivered in non-traditional ways. In addition to that, if we're not upholding the work-based learning continuum, so those different industry skills that our business partners have told us that our young people should be able to do and have, then this is not the model that we are giving back to our community, and this is not the model that will get, allow our young people to graduate the portrait of a Hampton graduate. Most importantly, for me, I'm biased, and I know some of you all, especially you, right? If we do not create a space where we allow our young people to know that they have a voice of leadership, but we show them how to use that voice of leadership to produce cultural change in their environments, if we don't leverage that and teach each other how to do that, then when and how would our young people leave and take on our roles in the future? As Dr. Smith says, if not now, then when? If not us, then whom? So while our young people are in our house, the house of Hampton City Schools, we want to make sure they leave the portrait of a Hampton graduate through the structures that we're deliberately putting in place to make that happen. So transforming the secondary school experience through capital improvement. So now we have our house, right? Our house is up, we want to make sure it looks good, right? We all have our personal tastes, so we want to make sure things are relevant in that house. Research continues to show us that 21st century learning spaces, they have benefits to our students and students' outcomes, right? So 21st learning spaces, there's decrease in behavioral issues in the building, there's increase in academic performance, and student and staff relationships improve as well. So not only are we creating small learning communities through this model, we're also ensuring that we have industry-driven labs and spaces that allow our students to develop skill sets that are relevant in the real world, but we're also transforming them that have improved academic and behavioral and relationship spaces as well, all through this one model and approach. So thank you ever so much for your continued support to allow us to redesign the physical space, as well of what the frame looks like upholding those spaces. So again, we continue to celebrate the different spaces that have been put in place in our buildings. As you can see, Bethel High School, Hampton High, Kiketan, and Phoebus. Here, you'll see completed and in progress. But then also, we're not stopping there. We have to continue to envision what these spaces will look like and feel like for our young people. And some of them are not easy, some of them are more difficult than others. So while we have a course of action and a plan we're putting in place, we're looking at how can we get a recording studio at Hampton High School? What does it mean to have a black theater box at Kiketan High School? What is a co-creation media lab at Phoebus High School? Or what is that media lab at Bethel High School? We're trying to envision and imagine what those spaces could look like. We all know, we're all not going to be here every day, every year, and things change. But what we want to make sure is that what we leave and hand off to the next person is part of a sustainability plan. So Dr. Haynes and Dr. Smith said, hey, let's make sure the capital improvement projects that we're talking about are part of the overall Hampton City Schools capital improvement plan that works in tangent with the city of Hampton, of course. So we are working with RRM architects to go into our different high schools and to look at the possibility. What are the possibilities? Our goal is for each academy of the sixteen to have an industry-driven learning lab. So we're working closely now to go into the spaces to see what those learning labs could look and feel like and be like for our young people. With that being said, it also creates an opportunity for us to look at the budget ramifications of these spaces so we can plan appropriately. They allow us to see what they can be through a design portfolio, and they also allow us to have an implementation plan that'll go along with it, that will be included in the capital improvement plan. So whether we're here or the next person's here, we have the opportunity to continue the momentum that we're putting forward now. The backbone of this model, of course, is you all, our business and civic engagement partners. And so we want to make sure that we have a system of accountability and support in space to make sure that our young people are getting what they need, but then also so our business partners have the support and integration effort, integrated efforts that we keep telling them that they can have. So as you've been hearing this from some time now, we have a governance structure that oversees the Academies of Hampton. We have a steering committee, we have an industry council that is forming. We are actually having an industry council meeting on October 18th, where we're going to pitch our need to the leaders of these industries and say, this is what we need from you all. How do we make it happen that's not only just relevant for us, but relevant for you all? So if you would like to join that conversation, please let us know. We also have advisory boards supporting our building, and then we also have business partners that are integrating with our efforts. This is an ecosystem. It's an ecosystem of support around our young people. As you can see, the students at the center, the portrait of a Hampton graduate is at the center of the system. Those who are closest to the student consist of the academy team, the academy leadership, the advisory board. We have the partners that are constantly circulating the system, but then the outside resources is the steering committee, industry council, and advisory boards. We are operating as a partnership, not only protecting the young person at the center, but it's through our efforts that the messaging that they receive will transform their futures. We can enhance that, and we know if we don't do it right, we can also hinder that. And I'm humbled by that. So what we do here to ensure that we have a positive ecosystem that surrounds our young people and the world of opportunity that awaits them is that we have a partnership integration model that we're putting in place, a sustainability plan. This sustainability plan helps us to support and manage current partners. It helps us to see our gaps and recruit future partners. This mosque, I'm doing it though. It helps us to measure and quantify partnership efforts, and ultimately, it allows us to acknowledge and celebrate what we're doing as a community. Just here, this is just to show you that the business partnership oversight is a system that not only consists of the division, but it also consists of high school oversight as well. So from the external oversight for the division, of course, we have the steering committee, we have Dr. Haynes, we have myself. But then at the building, we have a system where the executive principal oversees the partnerships along with the academy principal, and of course, the coaches and the coordinators are the ones that nurture those relationships. I know some of you, you can definitely speak to this, that when we engage in partnership conversations, it's a relationship. It's person-to-person, it's ongoing, and it's a reflective process. I know some who were recently in a meeting with us could hopefully speak to this, that it's really about exploring, what do you need? What would you like to accomplish? This is what we're doing, how do we work together? It's hopefully seeing that it's creating opportunities to connect, to explore, to define, collaborate, integrate, monitor, measure, and celebrate. But again, it's this ongoing nurturing system, where you have this space of transparency, because we don't have all the answers, but together, we can ensure that we get the answers, right? So this is the type of process that we're going through when we're looking at our relationships. So academy and pathway engagements, when we're looking at this, we're talking about relationships. One size does not fit all. This plan that would be for you is not the same as the plan that would be for you. But we have these conversations to really look at not only your needs, but our student outcomes, and develop the relationship together and the roadmap towards securing both of our goals. There's various ways to get involved with us, and as you can see here, we've mapped out some suggestions. We do not want to limit any possible partnership by just our thinking. We want to engage with our partners to see what your ideas are too, because we don't want to be limited by each other. We want to explore and expound upon each other's visions and goals. I will say this, and Dr. Smith is probably already yelling it, because I know Dr. Haynes is. He's saying, be succinct and say it loudly. This is not a sponsorship, it is not a sponsorship by any means. We will take your money, we will take your money, but we want your expertise. So this is not a sponsorship, it's an engagement. We want to work with you to elicit your expertise to come work with our students. Help us transform Hampton City Schools. Let's make it happen, not only because you need it, but also because we need it, but most importantly, our young people deserve it. So here's just some different levels of integration. We have name partnership opportunities, we have post-secondary partnership opportunities, advisory board, and academy and pathway opportunities as well available. I think it's the next slide. I'm excited to share, as I'm looking around, they are not getting up. So I'm going to ask a couple of people to join me, Team Phoebus to join me, and then also Dr. Brennan from now the Virginia Peninsula Community College. We have our first named partnership. Our first named partnership, who are committed to providing our students with over 2,000 hours of opportunities and to work alongside of us, not only to extend those 2,000 hours of opportunities, but to look at ways that we can continue to expound upon what we're doing. So at this time, I would like Mr. Harris. So we have, of course, the executive principal, Mr. Harris from Phoebus High School, and we have the academy principal of the, well, now it's the Virginia Peninsula Community College Academy of the College Experience, academy principal, Ms. Patrice Williams. And of course, we also have Dr. Brennan from Virginia Peninsula Community College. I'm going to get used to it in a minute. And we just would like the opportunity for you all, because their relationship that's gotten us here, not us, we would like you all to present Dr. Brennan with the official named partnership, so they all can showcase what we're doing together through our partnerships. Thank you both, I appreciate you. So at this time, I am going to ask Dr. Brennan if you would like to say any remarks? She almost, she literally almost fell out of her shoe.
Thank you, this is an exciting partnership, and don't worry, getting used to saying the new name, it's a lot, it's a lot, but we're working on it. But this is an exciting new partnership, and part of Virginia Peninsula Community College's new strategic plan is around powerful partnerships. And what is incredible about this partnership is it's powerful because we are all so aligned around doing what's right for students in this community and being excellent for people in this community. I had a conversation with a new staff member today, and we asked ourselves, like, who woke up to be mediocre today? Right? And we said, we can't, no matter how long a day is or tough a day is. I said, the people in this community are relying on us. We are creating the talent workforce, right, for the industries that are relying on us, and so there's no time for mediocrity, right? There's no time for resting on our laurels, and we don't get tired because we can't afford to be tired, because our community needs us. And so this is an exciting, powerful partnership, because it's not often that you get to be in the presence of people who are so passionate and so aligned, and will do anything to see those tassels, like the hassle is worth the hassle, that we are all so powerfully aligned in seeing our students be successful in whatever they've decided is success for them. And hearing your And hearing your completion rates and your dropout rates, I'm a competitive person, and so I am so impressed, but it makes me, it makes me, it fills my heart with joy knowing that you are creating young people to be successful, right, in the world and in their communities. And so I'm so happy to be partners with you personally and on behalf of the college. I thank you for the opportunity, and I thank you for asking us to be one of your powerful partners, and I look forward to wherever this journey is going to take us. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Thank you all, and thank you, Ron.
This is one division, one transformation. And we are not saying this just for namesake only. I was actually very humbled the other day. I'm not sure if you've had the opportunity, when you're going between spaces, I was going between work or wherever I was going, and I saw all these young people just waiting for the buses. They might have been elementary or maybe middle school, and I saw their mothers dropping them off, and fathers and other significant others dropping them off and waiting for the buses to arrive. And my heart pattered because I was so humbled by the parents delivering their children to us, delivering their prized possessions to us to nurture their futures, to educate their minds, but they did it with trust and love. So I was just so taken back and humbled that this one division, one transformation is not just at the high schools, it's our division. And so how are we going to do that? So Dr. Smith, Dr. Haynes, they came knocking, and they said, it's time. And so we are ecstatic to share that we're pushing forward with our middle school alignment process. And so we are working together through a similar process that we did with the high school model to backward map, okay, backward map, hear us out, backward map, the portrait of a Hampton graduate through sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, okay? And so then to do that, we're going to examine the transformation of teaching and learning through those various grade levels, the secondary school experience through those various levels, in addition to the business and civic engagement through those various levels. And so from there, we want to make sure that our processes that are taking place in the middle school and transition our young people to high school are similar in some ways, but in some ways, they're also going to be different, right? And so we want to make sure we not only meet the students where they are, but we bring them to where we see they're coming next. And so our goal not only is to backward map the portrait of a Hampton graduate, but it's also to backward map the community-connected work-based learning continuum that you saw earlier that showed the different grade levels and things that they're doing. So to do this, we have a working draft timeline, which is aggressive because we don't have time to waste, right? So as you can see here, we're currently in the pre-planning and data collection phases, and so we're getting ready to have very detailed conversation with our high schools to pull back on their wisdom, in addition to do gap analysis to see what we're doing already in our middle schools and see where the alignment process should be. You can see that we're going to take that information, disaggregate the data, and then the tactics, just like the high school model, will emerge. So what's the phase one tactics that we need to take place? Then from there, we'll vet that process with community leaders and others. We'll come back, develop the blueprint. We will present that blueprint out. And then our goal would be to then take the blueprint, mobilize that blueprint through integrated curriculum lessons or opportunities for our young people. Our goal, again, will be to pilot that on a smaller scale in the summer for a launch in our middle schools the upcoming school year. So then by that time, it'll be our goal, since we are being guided through this process again by Ford, that we will be one of the very few communities that's designated not only for the high school, but our middle school model. So we're very excited, and they're watching closely so we can be exemplars for others as well. So we're very excited about this. As always, if we come, we come with an ask. And so we ask you all, but we also ask the Hampton community, we are in need of your support. One, here's our question. Can you open the door to potential named academy partners? If you can, please send them our way. Two, can you open the door to a dry dock for the future floating classroom vessel? I know they're not easy asks, but somebody knows. Three, can you open the door to a potential marina to house our future floating classroom? I see people nodding yes. I feel like we're doing bingo or something, right? Should have treats. Number four, can you let us know if you have a contact for a potential vessel for the floating classroom? So if you know anybody trying to sell a boat, let us know. We will say that we already have some people that would like to donate and put towards our vessel, so we have additional funding opportunities as well. But these are our four immediate asks for you all and the community watching. Dun, 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 dun. I told you we're moving forward, so we're moving forward quickly, and on October 20th, we hope you can all join us. We will have the My Future, My Journey Career Exploratory Program where our young people, current ninth graders, will see the world of opportunity that awaits them. We have over 60 exhibitors already saying they're going to come and help share the good word of opportunity with our young people. And so please, if you would like to get involved, we would still take your registration. It's at no cost to you all, but we just ask that you come smiley-facedly and just help our young people, our ninth graders, right, to know what's out there, to know what's out there, how can they get there, and help them make informed decisions during their academy selection time that comes up in November. Again, we'd like to share and say thank you, excuse me, to the Academies of Hampton Steering Committee, of course, our co-chairs, Dr. Smith and City Manager Bunting, for their ongoing support. Would also like to thank you all. We know we would not be able to do it without your leadership, and we don't just say it because you're at the school bar, we say it because we mean it. You've been championing what we're trying to do here since it was before it's even got started, and you continue to champion what we're trying to do here and work alongside us to make it happen. So thank you ever so much for your ongoing support. It is leaders like you all who will make the way for us to make it happen, and so that doesn't go lightly when we say thank you for your ongoing support. And at this time, I conclude the presentation. Thank you. Dr. Haynes, come back, please.
We both keep trying to get away from the mic.
I know. Thank you so much. Thank you not only for the support and the leadership, but also for the enthusiasm. You know, enthusiasm, I believe, is contagious. And when our staff sees that you're excited, then the staff gets excited, then our students get excited, and it just, and our parents get excited, so it just keeps on rolling. And what we've seen tonight is testament to that. Any questions or comments from board members? Oh, yes, Ms. Afonja Jackson.
I will, I do want to just echo that it was an awesome presentation, very energizing, always very energizing when I hear from Ms. Heard about the academies. Just kudos to you, to the entire staff that's in charge of the academies. It's just excellent, it's exceptional. I get to talk to Ms. Tina Jackson sometime, but I know a lot of you, all of you are working very, very hard toward making these academies success. I just wanted to piggyback on two things that I heard this evening. One thing that I was very excited about was the students getting real work opportunity. And, and I actually had the opportunity to, to take two students into my agency over the summer, and they worked very, very well. I mean, I would, I would offer both of them positions ongoing. And so it was exceptional. I really enjoyed that partnerships, those partnerships are very powerful, gives them opportunity to really have real, real career experience, and they, they were prepared for it, I will say that indeed. The second I heard was just about the opportunities for businesses in our community and different organizations to partner with Hampton City Schools in a very fluid way. And I thought that, I really liked that we had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Heard and I, and I'm sorry, I might have missed her name, but.
Ms. Oliver.
Yes, Ms. Oliver. It's good to see you again. Yes, we had the opportunity to meet with CnF Bank on last week and just discuss some real opportunities for partnering with our students. And I really liked the way that, you know, it was an organic conversation where you could, you, you are able to let CnF know what, you know, we would like, but CnF was also able to share their vision for the underserved and the underbanked in our community. And so they, they did have vision, and I saw some real opportunity coming from that. So I really appreciate that about the academies, that we're not pigeonholing our organizations and our, and the agencies that choose to partner with us, but that we are allowing them to be great at what they're great at. And so I really appreciate that. Great presentation. I love the academies, I think it's awesome, and I just enjoy hearing it every time I hear it. Thank you. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Afonja Jackson. I just want to say, on behalf of the board, thank you for, in your way, partnering with them to, to get things done. You know, we talked about in our retreat that board members should lead by example, and that truly is what you, what you've done here, and we appreciate that. Many more, she said, many more.
I have lots more, lots more businesses for you, Ms. Heard.
Yes, yes, Ms.
May I also make a comment?
Mr. Samuel.
And answer the charge to two of your questions, Ms. Heard. I need for you to call me as it relates to the marina and, and the dock. I may have a resource that we can tap into. And secondly, I just also want to talk about the summer youth employment opportunity where our program, where we had over 80 students that participated in that program this past summer, and, and we link them to programs such as Ms. Afonja, the program. We also had students to work in the city of Hampton and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, so they had a vast array of experience. And I am happy to say that we are planning on expanding that program in the future, and we're anticipating having over 200 students in the future. And so we have seen tremendous growth and gains, and we just want to make sure that our young people continue to have that experience, that work experience, so when they leave Hampton City Schools, they are life and career ready. So kudos. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Samuel. Just another example of leading by example, I appreciate that. Any other comments from board members? Or just Dr. Woodhouse?
I just want to ask a quick question. I was very excited about your presentation on tonight, and always, I'm always excited about the academies. Where you have Phoebus High School and the University of Florida, I was looking at the different sessions that you have, is there any room for entrepreneurship?
Yeah, and I can speak for Captain Irvin. Not really, but I can.
That you will?
Absolutely, absolutely. We are actually exploring the next phases for the floating classroom. Not only are we building out the vessel, but how can we bring in the different elements? And entrepreneurship would definitely be one of those. We actually had a conversation that with you all about how we can bring in some entrepreneurs to not only for the expo, but different ways to integrate their experiences to help our young people move potential businesses or different types of thinking forward as well. So absolutely, I can call you, and we can talk more about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse. Yes, Dr. Mason.
Just a couple of comments. I am always amazed and impressed with what we're doing with Hampton City Schools, especially our academies. You know, you mentioned in your presentation that we're thinking outside of the box. I just want to offer correction. I think we've realized there is no box.
I think you're right.
Because of the things that we are doing with our academies, I mean, even during a pandemic, it's simply, simply amazing utilizing our traditional classrooms, English, math, and science, and how they can be integrated, that interdisciplinary study option to show students how those core subjects matter in their career goals and their choices. I remember being a student thinking, when am I ever going to use algebra? Never, you know? That's not, I don't want to be an engineer or anything like that. How am I going to use algebra? And giving them that option, you know, really, really is going to be advantageous to them as they continue to move forward. And to see that we're now pushing down into our middle school and our elementary school, you know, because truthfully, the portrait of a graduate starts at kindergarten, you know? And when we realize at that point, that early literacy and kindergarten learning, you know, we set the stage for that portrait, you know? From that point forward, I remember seeing a few years ago that there was a high school that actually had a tradition of walking their senior class in their caps and gowns through the schools of the elementary schools, you know? And that's when students begin to see at that level, that's what I want to be, that's what I want to do, and they begin to think about, you know, that mortarboard, that gown, that tassel, even at that age. And so I think we just need to continue to teach our young people to dream no small dreams, and I think that portrait will continue to, to come alive even more than it has. So thank you all for your commitment, all of you working with our academies, you know, you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any more comments from board members? Thank you, guys, again. Dr. Smith, before you move on to your second report, I've got notification that Mr. Kilgore has joined via Zoom, so we're going to have to vote to get him into the meeting. How can we hear him, Mr. Reeves? Oh, can he hear me? There you are. Can you hear me, Mr. Kilgore?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I need to ask the reason officially, Mr. Kilgore, you're unable to attend the meeting in person.
I'm on business travel.
Okay. And you're out of town?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, is there a motion that I can get from a, from the board members to, or a board member, to approve Mr. Kilgore's participation from remote location?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been properly moved by Ms. Afonja Jackson and seconded by Mr. Samuels that the board approved the remote location participation of Mr. Kilgore. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kilgore, could you please indicate your location?
Yeah, Simon Groton, Connecticut.
Thank you. Motion is approved, and we can move forward with our meeting. Thank you for joining, Mr. Kilgore.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. At this time, we will continue then in terms of superintendent and staff reports. I think that Mrs. Hatcher, who serves as our executive director for Student Services, will take the lead as it relates to the one division, one transformation for the 2021 and 2022 school year, as it relates specifically to the critical incident stress management, better known to us as CISM. I know she's going to make a formal introduction. I'm not going to take that away from her in terms of our assistant chief with us, but I want to say that this is also another opportunity and demonstration of showing that strong partnership with the community, certainly prior to the time of Ms. Tina Banks Gray joining the board, but from a community perspective and Y. H. Thomas, and seeing opportunities as to how we could strengthen that social and emotional, specifically focusing in the area of looking at our adults. And so at this time, I would ask that Ms. Hatcher take the lead as it relates to this particular presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, and good evening, Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Mason, school board members, Dr. Smith, and our Hampton community. This is another example of an excellent partnership and another example of some visionaries that are sitting with us tonight, and another way that we are going to see this work through. So in February 2020, which seems like a long time ago, a small group of representatives from Hampton City Schools, the city of Hampton, the Hampton Police Department, all began a conversation about providing some assistance to adults when there was a traumatic event or a crisis in our schools or in our communities. And so that small group included some individuals here tonight, Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Mason, Ms. Tina Banks Gray, who was then in a role with the city, and also our Assistant Chief Gallup with the Hampton Police Department. And he is here tonight, and I would just like to thank all of you, but a special. He met with us not only then, but several times he's met with Ms. Ruth and I and really been a great support and help. So the catalyst for the conversation that day was really several traumatic events that had already occurred in schools and in our community and in a short period of time. So it became apparent that while we do have some processes in place for our students, we really hadn't been intentional about those processes for our grownups. And knowing that, as Ms. Heard said, that those are the people taking care of the most precious gifts in our community, we want to make sure that they are also taken care of. So Chief Gallup did give us this model that I'm going to share, our Hamptonized version of that tonight with you, and I would like to recognize that Ms. Robin Ruth, our Executive Director of Human Resources, had a family emergency and couldn't be here, but she has really been leading this work, and I have been happy to come alongside her. Tonight, I also will have with me Ms. Shakira Williams, who is a school social worker with us, and Mr. Eric Stone, who is a director. and Mr. Eric Stone, who is a Director of Elementary School Leadership. And both of these individuals will give you a little hint at the end about what this process really looks like in real life as we move forward. So, let me see if my clicker. So what is CISM? CISM stands for Critical Incident Stress Management and is a highly structured and nationally recognized process. And it was initially created for the military as a tool for assisting soldiers who had experienced very traumatic events during their service. This model's been adapted since and it is used very often with first responders, utilized by police and fire departments around the country, internationally, and of course, in our city of Hampton here. So why did we look at CISM? I gave you a little picture of how this vision started, but really it fits so well with our strategic plan and our desire to create safe and nurturing schools for students and staff. So for many years, again, I spoke about our process for students and individuals that are hired to address the needs of those students, but we wanted to have that same intentional focus for our adults. So CISM will help us provide this structure, help us focus on adult needs following traumatic events, and help them move forward and rebound from these events. It will also allow us to create a more formalized process for addressing the needs of students because we really want to have this process reflected for students and adults. So a critical incident, you can see here what we're defining as a critical incident. But really, this work isn't so much about what we say a critical incident is or what has happened. It's really about the impact of these events on an individual and their ability to cope and their reaction to an event and how they can move forward. So we all will experience events and trauma differently. So what creates trauma and stress for one person may look different to another. In CISM, we're not critiquing a logistical process of how a crisis or an event is handled. We're not trying to diagnose anything with the individual. We're really just helping them to have a process, to have their feelings heard, and to try to be able to rebound from that trauma. So here are some examples of critical instances. And unfortunately, many of these have happened in our schools and in many schools around the country. So Hampton City Schools has, we have realized the impact of trauma also, not just in one of these serious incidents, but also the repeated events that may be smaller of nature, but start to build up and cause stress in individuals. And we can certainly look at the last 18 months, for examples, of some of that cumulative stress and crisis that are in our children, staff, and our own lives. So who are the members of our CISM team? We really, again, have two groups of individuals who are helping with that. And this first group that you see up here are hired by Hampton City Schools and many have a mental health background, such as our counselors, psychologists, social workers, and our nurses. Our school security officer are also hired and trained to work with students during a crisis. In this area of CISM, they were invited to start this work for us and be a foundation. They are already working with children when they experience crisis and trauma and now will be called upon to work with adults. One of the most unique and exciting things I think about CISM is that the second group that will be a part of our team are volunteers. These are known as peer supporters. They're not counselors, they're not mental health providers, and we're not training them to be that. They will play an important role in the team and they are volunteering not of their work duties, but because they really seek to help and support other individuals in their community. So it was very important, as Assistant Chief explained to us, that these be volunteers and that there be no requirement for our staff to participate in this team. What do the peer supporters do? All of our peer supporters will be trained and we have started that training. You'll hear about that in just a minute. We know that having a peer just to talk to and someone who understands where you're coming from, is familiar with your work environment, is trusted and respected, will encourage you to open up and share feelings that you have about trauma, how that's impacting you, what stress responses you might be having. And you're also more likely to hear some positive coping strategies and take those on if you're talking to a peer. Peer supporters, again, I said this, are really trained for emotional first aid. They're not counselors, they're not mental health providers. It's not therapy or anything at that level. What it is, is a way for us to talk about those feelings, validate the feelings, normalize those feelings, and offer some coping strategies. It is also, as part of the training, our peer supporters will learn some identifying characteristics that may recommend an employee seek mental health support from a mental health provider. So here are the individuals who have been working on this team, creating documents and helping get the training started. And it's a mixture of volunteers and those who already have mental health support. And we right now have 15 applicants who want to be peer supporters. And also, we have some folks who are also going to jump on board with this team and help us document some of this work. So we are committed this year to focusing on these areas as part of our implementation plan. We really want to build capacity and awareness around this. We now have 40 employees who've received CISM certification. We've had two classes that are provided by a CISM-certified mental health provider. And we are anticipating continuing those classes each month. Our goal is to have 30 people participate in the class each month. And it's an intensive training of three full days. So that's our goal for this year, to continue those monthly offerings to our staff. We also have a number of certified team member, as they grow, those individuals will be assigned to support specific schools. So we're looking at spreading out those volunteers, those peer support throughout our schools, perhaps using our high schools as the anchor and then those geographical areas around them to respond to crises and events that may come up. We want to engage Ms. Gurrel and her folks in marketing our CISM team so that, we have asked for volunteers and Ms. Ruth has shared, but we really want to do a more thorough job of marketing this so people understand the great benefit that this can bring to them by serving and to our community. We also are planning that we will begin on how to implement the CISM concept with our current system of support for students. So those folks that you saw on the first slide that are hired as mental health specialists, our counselors, our social workers, our psychologists, they will be working to align this plan for our students with the current supports that we have. So at this time, I will turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Stone and Ms. Williams, and they will share with you, they are involved in the training and some support work. So I will let them tell you how that's going.
All right, thank you very much. I am the volunteer, peer volunteer supporter of the group. While, Ms. Williams?
Good evening. I have some mental health background and I've also been training CISM as well.
So this summer, we, Robin, Ms. Ruth organized this phenomenal training of like four days of training and like three days, I mean, it was, it was really just wonderful, wonderful information. And when you're kind of looking back at all of it, it was, you know, part of it was just, you know, as you saw this evening, you know, you know the rationale and why this is an important piece of any school division to have. And yet, we're the only ones around who are even, again, the only ones that are leaping in and saying, we need this, this is important for our staff. And then, of course, it spills over to our students. So part of it was just getting the whole idea of what is involved in critical stress incident management. And we learned a lot about the physiological, the emotional, physical, psycho, I mean, it's all, everything that can happen and does happen when folks experience stress and whatever that may look like. And so that was a big part of the training. So we were involved in role plays and we watched videos and did reenactments and some different things like that. And then the other part of that was, we were having, I call it a strategy toolbox. There's so many different protocols that you use for different incidents and for different interventions, I guess. And I just threw a few up there. Ms. Williams and I were involved in a couple debriefings this summer, or this fall, okay, as it started. So we were really involved, we had about 40 of us involved in all this. We practiced, you know, we took like a group graduation picture, you know, we threw it all. You know, then we're all kind of walking out saying, okay, so what's going to happen? You know, when will we be called into service? And we got the email. Ms. Ruth sent out, again, to say, hey, I think we have something that, you know, we may want to try our, let's practice our skills because, you know, you can read about it and you can practice. But in the academy, there's nothing like real, real opportunities to put you in that. So there was an incident that happened at a particular school and we said, yeah, sure, let's do it. So Shakira and I, we planned a little bit, not much, you know? We were, she was at her school, I was doing my thing. We said, okay, let's go do this. So we met with a particular staff and kind of went through the process. Maybe you want to talk a little more about that at this time?
So we've had the opportunity to respond to two different situations. The first one, as Mr. Stone was mentioning, was a group setting, a group crisis that required some intervention and debriefing. I found it to be very helpful. As we know, Hampton City Schools does a phenomenal job at trying to support the students and families in Hampton. But just to have something for the staff takes it even like a step further. The main thing is, one important thing about CISM is we want to try to return the staff back to their original state before the crises happen. So we want to go in and kind of like normalize their feelings and have a great understanding of how they feel and offer support and coping skills just to get them back to that place that they were before so they can serve our children and do their jobs in an effective way. The second incident that I responded to was a peer support. And it was pretty much the same, people just want to feel heard. They want to feel like they're valued and they are valued. So just to have a listening ear, somebody to validate their feelings and let them know, hey, I hear what you're saying, you're not alone, let me know how we can help. And then if they do need to see a mental health professional, just providing those extra support so they can, they know what to do in that event.
Following the CISM event that Ms. Williams and I did, it was a couple of days later, I was, as we all do, text all the time. So I texted the, I texted the principal, sorry. I know I have a teacher voice, like, I texted the principal and I said, hey, how is the supported group getting along? Any feedback? Because this was our first, our first launch. And she, the principal responded, positive feedback. I think it made us stronger as a family team. The next day after the meeting, the energy in the building was slowly getting back to normal. And I was like, yeah, you know, that high five of, okay, we're on the right track. So, you know, we're just learning, we've had another training the other day. We had another training the other day and, you know, we're just going to get bigger and better and it's gonna, it's gonna be awesome. So I'll turn it back over to Ms. Hatcher.
Thank you. That was the real life look there. CISM in action, that's what you just heard. So at this time, if you have any questions, I appreciate the great vision that you all gave us and we're excited to get going with this and you'll be hearing more about it.
Thank you. Another energy-packed presentation. Any comments from board members or questions? Yes, Ms. Banks Gray.
So you know I had to say something.
Absolutely.
First of all, great presentation. And I would just like to say, thank you, Chief Gallup. Can you stand up, sir? We appreciate your, your, your leadership. And thank you for the call to action and leading us through this. There are so many benefits to CISM that I could be here all night long naming them. And I just appreciate the steps and measures to safeguard the well-being of our administrators, teachers, and staff. Like I said, this program is near and dear to my heart. And I just applaud you all for going the extra mile to ensure that we have the proactive measures that we have, need to have set in place, the leadership that you've put into this particular program. And just to know that we are the first in Virginia to have a program to this magnitude implemented is amazing. So applause once again to you guys and I do appreciate all your efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Banks Gray. Yes, Dr. Mason?
Well, you knew I was going to say something.
This is your baby.
Yes, I am, I am truly, truly excited from the first phone call to even this point now, seeing this come to fruition. You know, we started this when we went right into a pandemic, but that didn't stop the work, you know? And that's one of the things when we look at trauma, when we look at mental health, our world continues to move even when we are in crisis. And so we know that trauma, you know, can create so many obstacles and issues for everyday functioning, you know, simply from depression to anxiety. And we know that CISM works, you know? There's data to support that it's certainly going to help reduce those areas. And especially coming back to school out of a pandemic, there's so many things that, you know, being in this pandemic, and I really could go into a lot of detail, but I won't because we've been at this for a while. But we know that so many things are occurring right now from a mental health perspective as it relates to trying to discover and restore what we call our new normal at this point. And so I know that CISM is one of those things that's going to continue. And having the resources available, you know, our school social workers being able to step in and provide those supports, because as we look at these situations now, we're going to find that some other things are going to bubble up because trauma is longitudinal. And there's some things that as adults we experienced in our childhood that created those things. What we refer to as those adverse childhood experiences. You know, we don't realize that those things can cause hypertension, diabetes, strokes, and all of those things in our lives. And so being able to put something like this in our schools is simply amazing. And so thank you all for continuing to do the work every day, you know? And so I think this is certainly going to benefit our teachers as well as benefit our students and overall benefit our community. So thank you, thank you, Chief Gallup, Ms. Banks Gray. We started this thing, you know, together. So it was, you know, having that discussion, you know, it's amazing to see what it can end up being. And so I'm looking forward to it. It's one of those things that you really don't want to have to use it, but you're prepared if you have to. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well stated, Dr. Mason. Any other, yes, Mr. Samuels?
I just want to add to what Dr. Mason just said. And, you know, he's the subject matter expert on this in his field of health and counseling and so forth. But studies show that individuals respond better when they're receiving counseling from their peers because they have a shared, what's the counseling word? Shared experience. And that is, this is just amazing that we are utilizing this model so our staff can really have that conversation with each other instead of the fear of going to see a counselor or the fear of going outside of this community. And also, it also creates a system where the social work department is not overworked. The counseling department, Callan Mann Department, is not overworked because everyone, as Dr. Smith would often said, a systems approach. And so this is what it is. It's a system supporting each other. So thank you, Ms. Thatcher, for the work that you do, Eric and Dr. Copeland, all the others that participated in this activity. So it's from a humanistic perspective, this is a system that works.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. And it takes the stigma out of it. And that is just, remove this is so important. Any other comments from board members? Tamia? Okay. I just want to say that we live in such a great community here. And sometimes we don't tout it as much as we should. But our community is so strong and so connected to Hampton City Schools. It's amazing. I remember the phone call I received as if it were yesterday from Ms. Tina Banks Gray, who said, listen, I think we need to talk about something, something that can help all of us. And on the line with her was Chief Gallup. And we talked and she explained a lot of things as he did. And the first thing they wanted was validation and a meeting with the superintendent. And Dr. Smith made it happen in record time. And Dr. Smith made it happen in record time. A committee was formed, even included people who came to the table, like the city manager, Mary Bunty. So, it was a community effort to get this thing rolling, because we all need it. We all connect. And at some point, whether we admit it or not, we all have had individual traumas. And if you haven't, you lived long enough, you will. So, being able to know how to put those supports in place, those systems in place, is just phenomenal. So, I thank all of you, and thank you, Ms. Banks Gray, for getting this ball rolling with us, because that's what it takes. It takes that entire community.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Members of the board, that concludes superintendent and staff reports. Thank you so very much.
But, thank you, Dr. Smith. And I can tell you, we have had some outstanding reports tonight, staff reports. Lots of information, quite honestly. Yes, Dr. Mason?
Madam Chair, in light of the length that we've been at this so far with the reports and all, I move that we take a ten-minute recess and reconvene and meeting after that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been, a motion has been made by Dr. Mason, that we take a ten-minute recess and come back. It has been seconded by Mr. Samuels. Is there any discussion by board members? Hearing numbers, boughs, please call for the vote.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. We will go into recess and be back in ten minutes. Thank you. Okay, we are back. We've had our ten-minute recess, and we will continue with our agenda as presented. The next item of business is number five, the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. And before I ask Ms. Bowers to read the protocol, I'd just like to just say a couple of things. I want to make sure that our speakers and our community understands that coming to speak before this board is, it's not a right. It's a privilege. And it's a privilege that has been extended by this board. And I want to make sure that everybody understands who comes before the board to speak, that first of all, we have many, many ways in which, in which to speak to the board. You can do it through, you can do it through communications, through the superintendent. You can do it through communications with school employees and such.
Is that a correct?
Ma'am, you need to be quiet.
You need to respectfully answer the question.
And I need to also point out that whoever comes to speak before the board, regardless of what day it is or what subject it is, you need to show respect, because we have all seen, not only throughout the state of Virginia, but nationally, the summer school board meetings are just getting out of control. And it is because not the board members, but the speakers who are coming before the board, who are being disrespectful, using expletives, that kind of thing will not be tolerated in Hampton City Schools. So, I'm going to remind everybody, please listen carefully to the protocol that Ms. Bowers is going to read. Remind everyone who's coming before the board to speak to remember to be respectful, so that you can in turn be respected. If any of these things are not followed, we will ask security to remove you, because we will not tolerate this in Hampton City Schools. With that said, Ms. Bowers, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the forum and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with a quorum on policy issues. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Our first speaker is Charles West. I'm sorry, sir. Yeah, go there. Yeah, on the X.
Awesome. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Beautiful. Thank you guys so much for having me this evening. It's good to be here. Mr. Jason Samuels, do you remember me? We met at a community event, what, about six weeks ago? Something like, give or take, a community question-and-answer event. We had a good time. It was good to meet him, and we talked about the advancements the city of Hampton's made in the past five or 10 years, in terms of getting all the schools accredited and improving the graduation rates, and things of that nature. And we shook hands, smiled, had a good old time, you know, talked jobs, talked education. It was nice. And the very next day, I was informed about, you know, the issues that have been going on at Tyler, which I'm sure you guys will hear more about as time goes on. And honestly, Mr. Jason, I was sickened. I was sickened, man, that I sat in a room with you. And I didn't know, I didn't know, to ask you, because I don't want to get in this, you know, to sit at the table, you know, and be the guy. I want to get in this, because I'm the kind of guy who would take you outside and ask, what you planning on doing about this, you know? It's absolutely horrifying. So, I've kept a really... Sisters of the city, the children come first every time. And if you can't get with that as elected officials, then you should feel shame for yourselves, not just as public officials, but as people. So, like I said, tonight, when you go home, think about it. Thank you guys very much for having me and hearing me out, and that's all I've got for you.
Mr. David Dietrich is our next speaker.
Good evening, members of the school board, Chairman Cherry, Superintendent Smith. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road. A few weeks ago, an event took place, it was a gubernatorial debate between a Democrat and Republican candidates. And the Democrat candidate, Mr. McAuliffe, made a statement that was very troubling. Statement was, I don't think parents should be telling schools what they should teach. Now, what, what, what is your, what, where do you get your orders from? If it's not from the, from the parents of those children, who is telling you what to teach? What is your primary source? Do you think parents should be telling you what to teach their children? Or do you think it should be the teachers' unions? I expect, no matter what I say here tonight, you're all going to vote for Mr. McAuliffe anyway, because I think that's, that's the kind of people you are. This national school, Mrs. Cherry, you said something earlier about the... This National School, Mrs. Cherry, you said something earlier about the commotion that's caused at these school board meetings. And the National School Board Association, they said they didn't like to hear from concerned parents. They said concerned parents are domestic terrorists. How can that possibly be? How can a group of people that represent you say such a thing? They even asked the U.S. Department of Justice to intervene. And our department, our Attorney General actually said he's directed the FBI to look into the matter and considering parents' threats to public safety. That's just incredible. That's the kind of ideology, the kind of chilling ideology that destroys our society. We have two board members here that are concerned to me, I'd like an answer on, Mrs. Banks Gray and Mr. Samuels. They are both employees of the city and at the same time, members of the school board. Is that legal, Mrs. Reeves? If it is legal, is it ethical to have people with two jobs? Can they have three jobs, four jobs, working for the city? That I'd like to know. Let's move on to equity, because I heard that word mentioned several times earlier in the meeting. Dr. Smith, you're a member of the African-American Superintendents Council established last Why do black people need to be treated differently than whites? Why is that so essential in our society and our school system in particular? Is there something wrong with black people that they can't do the same kinds of things as whites? Is that what equity is about? What is equity? It's the allocation of resources to reach equal outcomes. Well, in other words, if there's a great old communist saying, "From each according to his ability, to each according to his needs." That's what we're now teaching in our schools and in many organizations in this country. And that brings me to critical race theory, which I expect that that's being implicated in our school system. That's a Marxist ideology. Race is the foundation of everything in our society. Well, it shouldn't be. Why are you all of a sudden making it that? Why do people think race, the color of your skin, makes you the person you are? No, God made you the person you are. He made the color of your skin. That's nothing to be ashamed of or expect special treatment as a result of. Holding people accountable for their race is really blasphemous. That's, they should be, it should be the content of their character, as Martin Luther King said, that we should be looking towards. Critical race theory, or whatever you want to call it in this school system, it teaches hatred of fellow students. It teaches, it separates us. It doesn't bring us together. This is about institutional racism. You talk about systemic racism. Well, systemic racism is a Democrat principle that is instituted in all of our major cities that are led by Democrat leadership. If you want to do something about it, go to the other party and have something really done. The purpose of our school system is to teach our children to be good citizens, to learn the basics, not to be indoctrinated with race and communism and Marxism and all these other things. And your job as school board members is to ensure that that's accomplished. This is a failure of government at its highest level. If government's so great, why does it fail all the time? Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Alana Brown.
Good evening, school board. My name is Alana Branham. It's a pleasure to see all of you again. As I was sitting and listening to the last segment, that was the, talking about the traumatic events of gun violence, psychological events, traumatic events, I was kind of concerned because currently in our school system, we have children who are now facing some serious traumatic events that are taking place with the issue. My issue is with the issue of the mask. I understand that we, as I said before in the last meetings that I've attended, that there is a concern of keeping everyone safe. I understand that. However, my concern is, if children are, now let me go back. If we have a society now who is open, restaurants are open, everything is open now. In a restaurant, you can go and sit down, remove your mask, sit with whomever you're sitting with and dining with, and not have a mask on. Is that correct? Are we doing that? However, we have a school system of children with the lowest rate, I don't know the statistic number, but who have the lowest rate of even getting COVID. We have them now in a system that is now more set up as very cold and like a prison system, where they are now all inside of one classroom. They have to sit six feet apart, armed distance, however, whatever it is. They have this plastic thing over the desk, they're wearing a mask, there's air conditioning blasting inside of the classrooms, teachers are wearing masks, children who have learning disabilities who need to see the mouth, who need to see mouths moving when they're speaking are unable to get that because of these masks that are being covered. Parents aren't allowed to come and have lunch with their students. We are basically being outed out from our children. We're being treated like we are the aggressors here, when we're actually the parents and we care. So to be told that, it's kind of, it's a slow system. It seems like there's a mandate, there's an agenda that's being pushed that is anti-parents, anti-children, anti-people. So you say that you're concerned about the traumatic events and psychological events of children, that is not the case here. Because if it were so, then there would be systems that are implemented to take, to have our children as the main concern. My two children, I have two children in Hampton City Schools, both of whom got sick with wearing masks, with the air conditioning blasting in the rooms, which I don't understand the purpose of that. And then they go from outside, they go from inside wearing a mask for six to seven hours a day, then they go outside, take a break at recess, they come back from sweating and playing, then they come back into the classroom where it's freezing cold. I'm trying to get the science. You all are about science and numbers. Can you give me some information of where that science is implemented and how that makes sense? And how is it helping when children learn and grow from having interaction with other students and with parents? How is that helping? How is that, how is that helping the children? You talk about trauma and traumatic and psychological issues, that is now what is slowly being implemented into our children. So if you all up here on this board, you must have some kind of care for children because otherwise you wouldn't be here. Can you tell me what exactly, what exactly do you think that this is doing to help our children in Hampton City Schools? The mantra is every child, every day, whatever it takes. What are you doing for every child in Hampton City Schools? And what exactly are you doing every day, every day? And what is it, what is it taking? What are you doing? I just would like to know that. I've sat and come to many meetings over the past couple of months and I've noticed that there are lots of applause and accolades being given to you on the board. But not once have I heard anyone mention about what's going on in elementary schools. What are you going to do to help, to better our students? It's always talking about, you're always talking about a, the success of the dropout rate or different other things. But what exactly is the goal? What are we going to do for our children? What is, what's the end goal? If you're, if you're really concerned about every child, every day, and whatever it takes, what exactly does that look like in the future, moving forward? The psychological effects and everything, that's just my concern. I'm a concerned parent and that is why I'm here. I'm not here to cause problems, I'm here to get some answers and to understand what the agenda is. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nikia Miller.
Here we are again, with no resolution for what happened to my daughter Celeste. There have been some changes, however. Celeste is no longer enrolled in Hampton City Schools. I would think that you knew this, but as Hampton City Schools has shown at each interval that you have communicated with my family, you have been inept with the most basic information. For example, looking into your computer system to confirm Celeste's enrollment after you made threats to not pay $15 a week in therapy costs if we disenrolled her. The carelessness and lack of empathy shown by this body, as well as the Hampton City Schools administration in regards to my nine-year-old daughter Celeste being repeatedly raped on the campus of John Tyler Elementary School is damning. Maybe this body assumes that because you changed the name of John Tyler to Mary Peak, this would all go away. I can assure you the damage that the ignorance, carelessness, and recklessness of Hampton City Schools still exist. I cannot understand how each one of you can tout the successes of Hampton City Schools all over the place, but can blatantly and obstinately gloss over your responsibility to keep my daughter safe on the campus of your schools. Ms. Banks Gray, you ran for school board and praised Hampton City Schools for their response for when your daughter was severely burned. What would you do if you were in my-
Excuse me, ma'am, can you put your mask back on? Thank you.
Are you fucking serious? Oh my God. What would you do if this, if you were in my shoes? Would you be satisfied with the response that my family has received? Would you be silent? Would you speak out? Ms. Jackson Afanjah, as the owner of Family Restoration Services, a business that you provides, that provides supports for children with emotionally and behavioral challenges, what would you instruct your clinicians to do if Celeste ended up in one of your programs? I have used your business before to assist with summer camp for my oldest child. How in good conscience could you sit on this board and not advocate for Hampton City Schools to do the right thing by my daughter while providing services to children who could have traumas similar to Celeste's? I could walk down this board one by one and call out personal instances where the things that each of you do outside of your board responsibilities make you hypocritical. But at the end of the day, the expectation that when you serve on the school board or a superintendent of schools, you keep the safety and security in mind for every child, every day, whatever it takes, should be your first priority. If you can't do that, then you should not be on the school board or serve as superintendent of schools, period. So, as stated above, Celeste is no longer enrolled in Hampton City Schools. We were blessed that her grades and accomplishments garnered an acceptance to a private school in the area. Celeste was able to do that despite what her, what traumas Hampton City Schools chose to ignore. My daughter is amazing. She was able to excel despite her circumstances. But what now? Her trauma doesn't start there, stop there. Her therapy doesn't stop there. Her moving to a private school has provided her with safety and security that Hampton City Schools has failed to provide. She no longer has to worry about whether her rapist is lurking in the shadows or will show up one day out of the blue. The joy is back in her face. On the first day of school at the end of August, I saw happiness in her that hasn't been there for a long time. But then again, what, at what cost? We are fortunate that between assistance from the school and my husband and I being able to cover the rest, Celeste does not have to sit in fear any longer. That, however, should not be our responsibility to finance. What we asked for from HCS was simple, placement at the school of our choice, assurance that Celeste and her rapist never be in the same school again, and that Celeste be provided priority, and payment for the cost of therapy for my family. Hampton City Schools has been callous and standoffish, and because of that, the demands have changed. If Hampton City Schools cannot provide an environment for a child to feel safe and secure, it is the responsibility of Hampton City Schools to fund alternative placement where those parameters can be met. How could you in good conscience rationalize that if my child was to ever encounter her rapist in another, in another school, that should not have addition, that she would not have additional traumas? Kelly Gorall provided a statement to the news media that two female students in the second grade who attended different after-school programs met in a girl's bathroom after school hours. Excuse me, ma'am. My daughter was repeatedly raped when her assailant fell her into a bathroom.
Excuse me, excuse me, ma'am. Can you wrap that up? Your time is out.
I find it real ironic, Ms. Stevens Cherry, that I informed you of what happened to my daughter the day I found out, and you have been avoiding me for 19 months. But yet, you want to sit here and as you guys were stroking each other's ego, you talked over the time limit that you allowed yourself, but then you want to enforce a time limit with me when I'm providing criticisms? You stated it yourself, if you cannot help, why are you here? Why are you here? If you can't help a child, I entrusted my daughter to you, just like Ms. Heard said.
Ms. Ma'am. Excuse me.
I entrusted my prized possession, the Hampton City School.
Your time is up.
And you provided her with additional trauma.
And if you continue to talk, I'm going to ask security to remove you.
How dare you! How dare you!
I'm going to ask security to remove you.
I'm fine, because I promise you, this is not going to go away, and I'm not going to go away either. Fucking bitch!
And with that, security, thank you. And I just want to, you know, with that kind of comment, I'm going to tell you, this may not be over, but you are not to come to another school board meeting in Hampton.
I'm cold with that. I'll sleep through my tummy when I speak in the press. I promise you, this is not over.
And one thing I would like to do now, security, can you get her? She is clearly out of control. So, I want to read a statement regarding the last speaker. "The information a parent has now come forth with is not factually correct. The school division did investigate and responded to the parent's complaint. Upon notification of the complaint, immediate action was taken by the school, which included a thorough investigation by the school division and the Hampton City Police Division. As you are aware, often there are specific details surrounding investigations in which we are unable to discuss due to confidentiality laws. However, what we can communicate regarding this matter is the investigation revealed that two female students in the second grade who attended different after-school programs met in a girl's restroom after school hours. HCS has no knowledge of these encounters, had no knowledge, until after the fact. And as soon as HCS was made aware, the school division acted as required by law in all manner. HCS made all reports and took all appropriate remedial actions as required by state law and as advised by our attorneys. In addition, HCS took proactive actions, including, at Ms. Miller's request, enrolling the aggrieved student at another school and offering counseling. It must be noted that if someone disagrees with actions of HCS, there are appropriate procedures that can be followed to reconcile grievances, including seeking redress in the courts. Erring disagreements on social media or in open forums is not a practice the school division endorses. If required, HCS welcomes the opportunity for a court to examine this situation as the division is confident that at all times, HCS personnel acted appropriately. Hampton City Schools staff members remain committed to ensuring a safe and nurturing environment for all of our students. We will have no further comments. Providing additional details may potentially breach the students' expectations of privacy with respect to their school records." Ms. Reeves, I would ask you on behalf of the board to draft whatever you need to draft so that we do not have that individual to attend board meetings again, if you can.
Will be done.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Now, moving on to the next item on the agenda, deliberation. It consists of several policies. The first four, Ms. Reeves, the last are Dr. Kason's. So looking at deliberation, do board members have any questions- board members have any questions regarding Policy AE, School Division Goals and Objectives, BCA, Board Organizational Meeting, CBG, Evaluation of Superintendent, or CH, Superintendent's Authority to Adopt Regulations? Any questions for Ms. Reeves? Okay. The next are Dr. Kason. They consist of Policy IKADB, Parental Responsibility, JBA, Parental Responsibility and Involvement, JECBA, Admission of Non-Public Resident Students for Part-Time Enrollment, JFCEA, Gang Activity or Association, JFCH, Alcohol Use and Possession, JG, Removal of Student from an Instructional Setting by Instructional Personnel, JHCE, Recommendation of Medication by School Personnel. Any questions for Dr. Kason regarding those policies? Okay, thank you. All of these policies will be moved to action for our next meeting. Moving on to item number seven. These are items for action. They consist of the minutes of school board meeting of September 15th, 2021, Good Cause Graduation Requirement Waivers, Revision of School Board Policy IND, School Ceremonies and Observances, Revision of School Board Policy JF, Students' Rights and Responsibility Handbook Code of Student Conduct, Revision of School Board Policy JFCA, Student Dress Code, Revision of School Board Policy JFCI, Student Drug Use and Possession, Revision of School Board Policy JFCJ, Firearms and Weapons on School Property, Deletion of School Board Policy JE, Student Attendance, Revision of School Board Policy KN, Sex Offender and Crimes Against Minors Registry Information, Revision of School Board Policy KNAJ, Relations with Law Enforcement Authorities, and Deletion of School Board Policy KNA, Violent Sex Offenders on School Property. Is there a desire on the board to take these as a block?
Madam Chair, move that we take this, um, items for action as a block.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Samuels and seconded by Dr. Mason that we take the items for action as a block. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is item eight, deliberation first read.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Point of order. There are two other items for action.
Seven one zero?
And seven point oh two.
Okay, who do they belong to?
One is just minutes. It needs to be voted on because one board member was not present.
Is that seven point one zero and seven point one one?
Seven point oh two.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So that was a... I didn't mean to interrupt you, but...
That's okay. Seven point zero one, minutes of the school board meeting of September 15th, 2021. Okay? Is there a motion?
What I do, uh, Madam Chair, I, uh, we draw my motion, and I would say we take item seven point two, seven point zero two to seven point one one as a, as a block, and vote on seven point zero one separately. Is that correct?
You already, you already did that, because she read seven point zero three to seven point one one as a lot, um, but we did not, we had not included seven point zero one and seven point zero two.
So we need a motion for seven point zero one and seven point zero two.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we, uh, vote on seven point zero one and seven point zero two.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Dr. Woodhouse and seconded by Ms. Banks Gray that we approve seven point zero one, minutes of the school board meeting of September 15th, 2021.
And if I can recommend you do them separately.
Okay.
Because the minutes need to be voted on separately because they...
Can you make that motion?
All right, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept, uh, seven point zero one, the minutes of the school board, that we approve the minutes of the school board for September 15th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Dr. Woodhouse and seconded by Ms. Banks Gray that we approve the minutes of the school board meeting of September 15th, 2021, which is item seven point zero one. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, please call for the votes.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Abstain.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Is there a motion for seven point zero two?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve, uh, seven point zero two.
Second.
Okay, it has been properly moved by Dr. Woodhouse and seconded by Ms. Stephanie Afanjah Jackson that we approve item seven point zero two, Good Cause Graduation Requirements Waiver. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Now we move to deliberation first read. Um, let me point out that item eight point zero one, which is the first one, Revision of School Board Policy IG, School Year/School Day, that actually had a change, and you all have had that placed at your, at your spots, okay? Okay, great. Um, deliberation first read. Uh, Dr. Cagiano, you wanna come up and explain each one? I think you have the first five.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Mason, members of the board, Dr. Smith. In reference to that first policy you mentioned, Madam Chair, uh, Policy IC, School Year/School Day, we did make a few modifications earlier today, just based on some additional staff feedback and for clarification purposes. So, I do want to read, uh, just some, some verbiage from State Code 22.1-98, uh, some recent revisions to this particular code that state, and I quote, "When severe weather conditions or other emergency situations have resulted in the closing of any school and a school division in in-person instruction, the school division may declare an unscheduled remote learning day whereby the school provides instruction and student services that are consistent with guidelines established by the Department of Education to ensure the equitable provision of such services. No school division shall claim more than ten unscheduled remote learning days in a school year unless a superintendent of public instruction grants an extension." So for this particular policy, if you look, really minor revisions and really VSBA recommendations, we changed some of the verbiage that VSB, uh, VSBA recommended on the first page. And so for Mr. Kilgore, it states here, "If severe weather conditions or emergency situations result in the closing of a school or schools, or all the schools in the division," and that was current policy in Hampton City Schools, "we then added the language 'to include in-person or remote learning.'" And then what you state, what you see stated there at the end of that first bullet suggested language that basically states that for five or few fewer days, all missed days will be made up by adding teaching days to the school calendar, extending the length of the school day, and this is the new language, Mr. Kilgore, or by utilizing bank state, bank student instructional days built into the academic calendar. And then we use that same language for the second bullet at the end of the second bullet, uh, for that, that particular section entitled Make-Up Days. And then you see the verbiage on the second page, which speaks to, again, the opportunity for now school divisions in Virginia to utilize, um, remote learning days and count those towards, uh, your regular required hours being that 990 hours or 180 instructional days. So those are the suggested revisions to the board for Policy IC. The purpose of that review primarily, again, a new language added regarding severe weather conditions and potential unscheduled remote learning days. I'll move along, Madam Chair. The next policy?
Yes, sir.
Next policy is Policy IGAI, Character Education. Minor revisions there, just really legal references updated to reflect updated Virginia Board of Education Guidelines. Moving along to the next policy, IGAJ, Driver Education. New language added regarding teaching about dangers of distracted driving and speeding pursuant to changes again in the Virginia Code. You'll see there was a typo on that title as well, so that title has been changed to reflect the actual title of the policy, Driver Education. The next policy, IGBC, Programs for Academic Achievement of Disadvantaged Students. The purpose of that review was legal reference updated to reflect updated Virginia Board of Education Guidelines. So again, uh, no substantive changes to that particular policy. And then the last policy for me this evening, Policy IJ, Guidance and Counseling Program. Purpose for the review, legal reference updated to reflect updated Virginia Board of Education Guidelines, and again, for that particular policy, no substantive changes are being recommended to the board. And that concludes those five policies, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any clarifying questions for Dr. Cagiano on these policies? Okay, thank you so much. The next, one, two, three, four, the next five, I believe, are Ms. Ruth, Ms. Hatchet, will you be doing that, or would that be Ms., um, okay, Ms. Reeves?
I'll jump in.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the first of the three policies of Ms. Ruth's, GBB, Staff Participation Committee, that's simply a five-year review, um, and no changes are being recommended. Again, um, a GBB-R, Staff Participation Committee, Administrative Guidelines, also the five-year review with no changes recommended. And GBCB, Confidential Information, another five-year review, no changes recommended. Um, Policy GBE, Staff Health and Safety, was another five-year review, and there are some small, um, policy language revisions that were made, um, given VSBA recommendations for, um, those, those changes. And finally, GBEA, the Workers' Compensation Policy, is another five-year review, and, um, she is recommending some very minor policy language revisions, again pursuant to VSBA recommendations. Thank you.
Any questions about those policies for clarification from Ms. Reeves? You, Mr. Kilgore?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and the last one is Ms. Gorrell, I believe.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Mason, Superintendent Smith, and school board. Um, the next, or the last policy, I guess, for the evening, is Policy KBE, which is Internet Privacy. This is actually a new policy. It aligns with Virginia Code 2.2-3803. And basically, Hampton City Schools provides information and services via our division's website. And so per State Code, as well as recommendation from VSBA, they're asking for a policy to be put into place that lets our, um, individuals know what type of information we're collecting when they visit our website. So the big piece of this is that any personnel, personal information collected through our website will be gathered in accordance with the law, and only the extent necessary to provide the information and services desired by the website visitor, and that, that the superintendent or designee is responsible for creating and updating as necessary an internet privacy policy statement, which has already been created and placed on our website.
Okay, thank you. Good job. Any clarifying questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Moving on to item nine, information. Dr. Smith, I believe you have Business Operations Financial Report.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair, for that. Um, just to, uh, share with the board that you have in the information section, uh, the July 2021, as well as the August 2021, uh, financial report, uh, submitted by our Chief Financial Officer, um, Ms. Torch. And so if you have specific questions there, we wanted to make certain that we continued with the process to make them available to the board as well as the public. And, uh, Ms. Torch will be available at our next meeting to answer specific questions that you might have regarding those reports, but we wanted to make certain they were included, uh, in, in this packet. Uh, finally, um, Madam Chair, if I may, with capital improvement.
Yes, absolutely.
And, uh, we would encourage, um, our viewing audience, as well as certainly, I know the board members have had an opportunity to review all of the capital improvements that have taken place, certainly during this school year, uh, the summer, and, uh, leading up to the opening of school. Uh, Dr. Boland, uh, provided, I think, about 153 slides, right?
(laughing) Ms. Banks Gray said 154.
Quite educational, um, and, uh, I think that if individuals, certainly our viewing audience, you got a chance to, to really see, uh, the investment of your taxpayer dollars and how this board and, and, and certainly we join in terms of partnership in using those, um, uh, dollars to support the education in renovating spaces, uh, in terms of those teaching and learning spaces. Exceptional work. And so, uh, Dr. Boland, thank you, and certainly members of your team. Uh, but you got a chance to see and to feel, uh, the accomplishments there when you go through the, uh, the PowerPoint presentation. So, Dr. Boland, thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes information from the superintendent, uh, as relates to the business operations, the financial report, as well as capital improvements.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I'm sure that Dr. Mason appreciates that. (laughing) Okay, moving to item 9.03. The next meeting of the Hampton School Board will take place at the Rupert Sargent Building, October 20th, at 6:30 PM. Now for informational items, do you have any informational items to come before the board, Mr. Superintendent?
Uh, no additional items from the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any informational items from board members? Yes, Dr. Woodhouse?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, I just wanted to let, uh, this board know that the New Horizon has opened a solar energy, uh, department, and so it's at the Woodside Campus. They're in partnership with, um, Virginia Power. So I think that's a wonderful program for them to have initiated over there.
Oh, awesome. That is awesome. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Samuels?
I think, uh, um, thank you, Madam Chair. I think, um, Dr. Woodhouse now serve as the vice chair of that board.
I serve the chair.
The chair. My apologies for that. So, I'm hoping that, you know, if he can, um, pull some strings and, um, have us get a tour of that new facility, that would be outstanding for Hampton City Schools.
We can do that.
Yes.
That's a great idea. Yes. Any other information? It's Dr. Mason.
I just wanna say to Dr. Boland, I looked at all 153 of those five.
He did. I want you to know that.
Excellent job. Excellent job. Capital improvements looked great.
Yeah, he did say that. He did, honestly. Um, any other information from board members down this end? I'd just like to state, um, on behalf of the board, that we owe a big thank you and kudos to the staff at the schools and the staff in the division and Ms. Gorrell and Ms. Bain and all the other people who helped make the official dedication of those five schools last week possible. They were awesome. And, um, I mean, it was two whirlwind days, and we, we were meeting ourselves, coming and going, but we made, we made it happen. And I can tell you that so many people in our community are very appreciative of that and appreciative of the board that we were able to, to make that happen in terms of naming our schools after people that children could be proud of. But the work you all put together, it was fabulous, and I just wanna say thank you on behalf of the board.
And Madam Chair, may, may I, uh, ask?
Yes, sir.
At this time, to invite Dr. Stacia Barrow to come forward. I don't know that, uh, I don't think we've made an official introduction to the general public, and, uh, Dr. Barrow serves as our chief of elementary schools and compensatory programs, and worked diligently with our, uh, school leadership in helping to move those renaming efforts forward on behalf of the board and the superintendent's office. And so, I wanna personally also thank Dr. Barrow, and get the opportunity to say to the public that we're delighted to welcome her to the team of Hampton City Schools, your return to Hampton City Schools. Uh, she served, as you know, Madam Chair, as the principal of Aberdeen, and then had a long tenure in another school division, uh, and, uh, served as director of special education. We're delighted to have you. So I wanted to bring that to the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you so much. She did a great job. She did. I remember we were leaving, I think, Mary T. Christian School, and then we had to head to Mary W. Jackson.
That's right.
And I was trying to follow her, and I kept saying, "Where is she going?" I think she pulled in Krispy Kreme. I don't know, but I had, I had to turn another road, but we got there. (laughing) Thank you. We certainly do appreciate it.
More than likely, she turned into Krispy Kreme. I'm learning that.
Okay. Any other information come for board? Okay, hearing no more business, we adjourned.